Hear the people in chambers.
Is it? Oh, hmm, doesn't seem like it.
It seems like all I can hear now is just the people who are online, but not anybody who's actually in council chambers.
Hmm.
Can you hear us now?
Ah, there you go.
All right, we're ready to go. The City of Bend Accessibility Advisory Committee, February 22, 2024, alternate date, hybrid meeting is called to order at 1:02 PM. This is a reminder that throughout the meeting, please announce your name before making your comments. This helps people with low vision or those who are blind know who's speaking and those where speakers, pictures and names do not appear on their monitors. We'll begin with a roll call of COBAC members and encourage each member to provide a self-description. I'll begin. I'm Carl Burnett, the chair. I use he/him pronouns. I'm here in council chamber today, wearing a black baseball hat, glasses and a blue and white striped sweater. John, would you like to go next?
Yeah, I am Vice Chair John Halen, he/him pronouns. I am onsite and I'm wearing a very pink hoodie.
Very pink.
Very pink.
This is Aaron Rivers. I'm attending online today. I use he/him pronouns. And I'm wearing a gray sweatshirt. I have brown and gray hair.
Excuse me, this is Amanda Himmer. I'm in council chambers today. I'm wearing reading glasses on and off. And I have my hair partially up and I'm wearing a brown dress with purple sleeves. And I go by she/her pronouns.
I'm Derek Hoffbauer, he/him pronouns. I am wearing a gray sweater with a collared shirt that's plaid, brown hair.
Uh, Cory?
Hi, I'm Cory Sparks. I'm joining on Zoom today. I have kind of dark blonde hair and a ponytail and gold-rimmed glasses and a tan hoodie on. I use she/her pronouns.
Oh, uh, sorry. I'm Liz Deacon Martin. I'm attending virtually. I am a middle-aged woman with medium brownish hair, glasses and a black sweater, and I go by she/her.
Hi, I'm Liz Woodfin. I'm attending virtually today. I'm a white woman, blonde hair, blue eyes, and I'm wearing a pink sweatshirt with a black over thing, like sweater.
Hello, Nicholas Raiden. I go by he/him, his pronouns. I'm a middle-aged Caucasian male with a hat on today and a blue sweater with a white undershirt and a beard with a headset on.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Etsman, she/her pronouns. I'm attending online today. Wearing a white hat, glasses and a blue shirt.
And I believe we learned that Whitney is going to be potentially attending at some point, but she's in the middle of traveling and flying right now.
Got it. Okay, we'll move on to the land acknowledgement. Do we have a volunteer to read that today?
I can do it.
In English, you don't have to do the Spanish unless you want to.
My accent's very bad. "We would like to acknowledge that the beautiful land known as Bend, Oregon, north to the Columbia River is the original homeland of the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs. The Confederated Tribes ceded this land in the Treaty of 1855 while retaining regular and customary hunting, fishing and gathering rights. The Wanalama, Warm Springs, Wasco and Northern Paiute people inhabited this area in certain seasonal times that clearly established their presence. It is also important to note that the Klamat Trail ran north through this region to the great Salillo Falls Trading Grounds. This trade route expanded the impact of commerce between tribal nations. We acknowledge and thank the original stewards of this land. It is our hope that guests continue to honor and care for this land."
Thank you. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes from our January meeting. Thank you, Lisa, for sending those out. I hope that people had a chance to review those. Are there any corrections that members would like to make to the January 25 draft minutes? Okay, hearing no changes to the proposed meeting minutes, seeking a motion to approve the draft.
I motion to approve the meeting minute drafts for January 25, 2024.
Thanks. Is there a second?
This is Derek Hall, second.
Okay, all in favor of approving the draft minutes from January, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Unanimous from what I can see. So the January 25, 2023, 24 rather, minutes are unanimously approved. We have a public comment period. Any members of the public who would like to make a comment? You have up to two minutes.
We have two online. Let's find out.
Great.
Hello, Charlene. Did you want to say something? You have a comment?
I see that Liz Woodfin, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to say hello and welcome my friend Michael Bull, who is in chambers today. Michael is really involved with the ADD community. And so I just wanted to say hi to him. Welcome.
Thanks for being here, Michael.
Charlene?
Yeah, I'm Charlene Wilson. I'm just a guest today. Listening to the meeting. Thank you.
Great.
Thanks, Charlene.
Hello.
And a public comment that came in from a member of the public. Oh, sorry, Lisa, what was that?
We have somebody else on.
Oh, go ahead, yeah.
Johnny Archer? Did you have a comment?
Okay.
Stephanie has her hand up.
Yes.
Yes, I just wanted to, I just wanted to welcome Charlene to our meeting as a guest and introduce her to that she's on, she is on COCA Steering Committee with me and is a member of the COCA General Membership. So, thank you for coming, Charlene.
Hi, I'm Johnny Archer. I apologize, you just called on me, but it didn't give me the unmute function until just now. I was not raising my hand. I just was joining as a guest. I'm a Senior Operations Engineer specializing in accessibility for Paramount, and I had gotten an email that this group was working in Bend. And so I just wanted to join and listen in and see if potentially there was any areas that I could support or help with. So, that's why I'm here.
Great. Thanks, Johnny.
Of course. And so that other public comment that came in was written, and so if one COBAC member wouldn't mind reading it, it's going to be on the screen. And it came from Jordan, who is a known COCA member and a community member regarding snow removal.
Great, I can read it. "Using Google Maps and my power chair, it took me over two hours. I could not use much sidewalk as it was covered with snow. When I got downtown, I had to use the road because the sidewalks were not very good. I'd just like to figure out a solution for the next snowfall next year so that I can get through downtown and places that I want to go safely. It just seems like the City of Bend and ODOT don't really care much about doing snow removal every year. And also, I tried to use the signals and could not because the snow was covering the ramps to get to the buttons. So I'd like to work on this throughout the year so we have a plan already in place for next year." All right, well, yes, thank you to Jordan, if you're listening to this, for making that comment. We appreciate it and certainly relate to it and share your sentiments about the frustration of getting around Bend in the winter.
And Carl, if I could just interject, this is Cassandra, just to say, I think this is a really nice, like a Venn got diagram section of the work that Leadership Bend Impact Project, and I know I saw Ben pop on and we're looking forward to your update soon, but bringing awareness and education to it, not only in the idea of co-compliance and reporting, but really, how are we supporting local businesses? How are we supporting residents, whether they be renters or owners? And what can we do in our COBAC work plan ourselves? How can we collaborate with others? And how can we, as City of Bend Accessibility and Equity Department, work towards creating an education campaign with communication? So I think there's a lot of cohesion and a lot of area that we have crossover. And so I'm looking forward to potentially addressing that and adding that in. And thank Jordan for the advocacy and bringing that up, and I know it's something we address pretty often and frequently.
Yeah, I see Liz has her hand up. Go ahead, Liz.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I also spoke to a couple of community members in the past month. And one was, you know, had a different perspective. She has a disability and she needs help clearing snow from her place. And so she was wondering if there could be a good neighbor network or a helpline or something like that. I thought that was an interesting idea. And then, of course, I reinforced it by herniating a disc while clearing snow in front of my own place. I'm in the group now.
Yeah, yeah, temporarily able-bodied, right?
Yeah, exactly. All right, that's all.
Yeah, well, maybe during our roundtable section, we can talk a little bit more about snow removal because that is top of mind for a lot of people, myself included right now. I think that would be great. First, though, let's move into our Leadership Bend update from Ben Berry. I think Ben is online. Ben, you have 10 minutes. Update us on your group's Accessibility Impact Project. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. I'm Ben Berry. I use he/him pronouns. I am a white man in his 30s with a mustache and messy brown hair, and I'm wearing a gray sweater and a purple collared shirt. I don't think I'm going to need my entire 10 minutes, honestly. I'll just give you kind of a high-level overview of sort of our three little sub-project teams and their focuses. And then I looked over our notes from last time and I have a couple of asks or things that I wanted to follow up on with y'all. So the three things that we have to cover are the main part of our project, which is the website. So we're hoping to have all of our content kind of organized within the next couple of weeks. And then our goal is to have a kind of draft or beta version of the website containing all of the information and resources that we're pulling together right now, created in concert with the City of Bend. I can't remember what TJ mentioned last time, but that webpage or series of webpages will be hosted by the City of Bend and maintained long-term by them. So, end of March, hopefully, for draft of that. We have another group that is working on outreach to local businesses. Sorry, go ahead. Someone had something to say there?
No.
Okay, maybe just the mic freaking out. So, we have a team working on outreach. We have a list of targeted businesses that we want to reach out to and then plans for kind of getting in contact with those businesses through the City of Bend Business Advocates. They are already putting together a list to reach out to businesses about the new transportation fee increase. And so we're going to try and use that list to help us get in touch with people. We also have plans to leverage Cascade Business News and the Bend Chambers' relationship with them. And then the Bend Chambers' list of businesses and kind of information dissemination channels. And then when everything is said and done with the website, we're planning on sending out a press release through the channels that I've just mentioned. So, kind of taking a step back, we have this website, we have this outreach plan. And the goal of that website and outreach plan is to reach businesses and increase their literacy in how they can be better neighbors and make their businesses more inclusive for people with with a variety of different ability levels. So, part of that is to pull together information and statistics to serve as kind of a carrot and a stick to say, here, these qualitative stories or pieces of information that we've heard from community members about things that are really helpful for them and things that are difficult for them. And then here are statistics about the number of people with different types of disabilities in our state and how we can help accommodate those people. Sort of a, you're losing out on X amount of business if you don't provide certain accommodations. And just giving people the information to make their own decisions about how inclusive they want to make their business spaces based on numbers. So that's kind of the update. Sorry if any of that is a little repetitive from last time. And then in terms of, well, I guess I'll open it up if any of you have questions or things you want to comment on at the moment, and then I can go over my asks.
Ben, this is Amanda Himmer. Curious where you're getting information from the community? Like, who are you reaching out to? Maybe you said this and I just don't remember, but could you recap maybe?
Yeah, that's excellent. Honestly, we were hoping to do that through COBAC largely. There are a few community members that we're already in touch with. But honestly, in terms of getting qualitative information about what works and doesn't work for people with different disabilities, we were really hoping to leverage COBAC to get that contact.
Okay, thank you.
Ben, this is Carl. I had a question. You mentioned that it would be through the city to maintain update. I was wondering if you'd identified specific people or agencies who would be responsible for that. Because obviously, it's one thing to get something like this off the ground, and then it can be a challenge to keep it going and keep it live and updated in the future.
That is an excellent question. Cassandra, I think, was involved in those discussions with TJ, who's leading our website team. Cassandra, can you remind me of who you guys are in contact with? I think maybe it's Jacob?
Absolutely, Ben. Thank you. This is Cassandra. Yeah, Carl, to answer the question, so identifying that, I think, the terminology and kind of the IT and website world is the evergreen nature. That it can be something that continues to live on after, you know, the completion of the project. And so in conjunction with Community Department, Jacob Riggle for this website, but continue to monitor and watch it. Like a weird kind of scratching, maybe a mouse. Okay, okay. So it's going to be handled by both Accessibility and Equity, our departments. So something that we'll continue to update in conjunction with the Communications Department as well and City of Bend internally.
Your Communications Department?
So, yeah, both the Communications and Accessibility Departments.
Okay, great. Other questions for Ben? Great, well, thanks for your update, Ben.
Can I just go forward with my quick asks here or like check-in stuff?
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. So there are four items. One of them is, I believe Ben Hague has sent a list of our her questions for interviews with members of our community who have disabilities. So we were hoping for a review of those questions by at least a couple of members of COBAC and then help getting in contact with people. I think I see Liz raising her hand.
Yeah, I'd be happy to help with that.
Awesome. Thank you, Liz. And that actually takes me to one of my other questions, I think, or like comments from last time. As I think we discussed trying to get in touch with you, Liz, and I think, you know, like, we haven't reached out and I don't think we heard from you either, so. That kind of closes the loop on that.
Okay, yeah, let's do that this week.
Cassandra, would you mind just sending an introductory email, please?
I do have a question. Happy to look.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And, sorry, go ahead.
Cassandra, again, I think that based on what we had heard from Ben Hogg, that he'd like if I could have warm handoffs to some, like, diversibility and high desert full access and some groups in town that might be able to have kind of the surveys and the questions be shared. It's pretty streamlined. There's four questions. It's pretty short. So I'll send it out to all COBAC members in an email after this, and you can share it as you can with your communities if that's possible. And Ben, I'm sure Ben Hogg and also just you all will have a deadline for us when you'd like to have kind of that back so that you can begin to begin the narrative of that qualitative survey and kind of storytelling.
I would just like to say, I think that the person who came before us to talk during public comment about the brewery is an ideal person to interview because they pretty much spurred a lot of this, and I think including them would be crucial.
Okay, this is Ben again. Sorry, I was just taking notes there. And then there's one other thing. We had a discussion, I think this was individually with Cassandra, last week. Someone had mentioned that Nancy Stevens might be able to help us with our search for statistics about about folks in our state who have disabilities so that we might be able to get some better numbers for businesses and for the website.
Yeah, she's a friend of mine. I can help with that.
Awesome. Thank you again, Liz. Appreciate it. And that's all I have.
That's all you have?
Yep.
Thank you. Thanks for the update and thanks for the work that your group is doing on that stuff.
Yeah, thank you all for your support. Appreciate it.
Okay, let's move on to item number six on the agenda, which is updates on our COBAC 2024 strategic plan. I'll call on each of the three subgroups to let us know what they've been up to. Derek, can I put you on the spot and ask you to give an update on our Transportation and Infrastructure Group? You can look on here if you want to review the email you sent us.
Sure. Yeah, so we have two components. One is to explore having some or more ADA accessible vehicles to and from the airport, being like taxis, Uber, Lyft, so many kind of shuttle service. And then our second is to do, host one event that's a, I think we call it like a walk and roll event that highlights some infrastructure that's challenging for people with disabilities to move across the street. And so the second one, Whitney's kind of leading that one. She's out today traveling, so I think we could come back to that one another time. We're really focused on the first, which is, you know, working with the shuttle companies, doing some research to see what's available. Our subgroup met last night, Carl, myself and his friend Gabe, who also has a disability and has had challenges getting accessible transportation to and from the airport. So he shared a story and then informed us, you know, there's a provider that does actually have an accessible vehicle, but, you know, he was kind of lucky to get it. He knows the guy. So digging in a little deeper, trying to do a roundup of all the providers, like if they have an ADA accessible vehicle or not. And then also then looking into, you know, what are their hours of operation? Could somebody get that at, you know, four in the morning when they need to go to the airport? And then potentially working with the city on any kind of issues relating to, you know, taxis and shuttles being required to have an ADA accessible vehicle. So it seems like through the ADA law that should happen, but it's often not available, even in big cities. Gabe's story about traveling to Minneapolis, he was trying to get an ADA accessible vehicle, couldn't find it. So it seems like it's kind of a common practice, and so we're just kind of wanting to know some of the rules around that and, you know, how the city works with those cab companies or the City of Redmond as well, because we're looking at a trip that's going, you know, either originating in Bend or originating in Redmond, but kind of crossing two jurisdictions. So also wanting to kind of weave the City of Redmond and the airport in that conversation as well, and the Airport Director and his staff. And then also looking at, you know, once we do that roundup, coming up with some recommendations that we would provide to the city as to how, you know, community members who have a disability might in the future be able to have better access to vehicles, shuttles. There's also an effort, CET could play in this, that's Cascade East Transit. We do a lot of the brokerage and the reservations with all of our dial ride service and as well as our veterans' rides and things like that. So we could, you know, potentially step in to help connect potential users to potential services because CET contracts with most of those taxi companies anyways to do non-emergency medical rides as well as veteran rides. So potentially leveraging on some existing resources to make it not such a big lift. So that's kind of in a nutshell what we're exploring and just kind of heading down that research roll. We looked at our timeline and we think we'll be able to meet kind of our July 1 work plan, getting a work plan out with some recommendations and highlighting some of the research, so.
Yeah, and one thing, this is Carl, one thing that we are coming to terms with, I think, is that a big part of what we can do as a committee is to make recommendations to other parts of the city government about things that we think should be happening to encourage the accessible transportation to exist. So we're not legal experts. We can't say definitively whether our local businesses are complying with the ADA or not, but we do have a legal department here at the city who could look into that for us. And we think that we'd like to make some recommendations that include an analysis of that situation from a legal and licensing standpoint to see whether there are things that the city could do to encourage more businesses to comply with laws about accessibility in this area. We have some goals that we're starting to identify around this service, whatever form it takes. It should have a cost that's comparable to what a person without a disability might pay to travel to and from the airport. And we'd like to see that work within the within the systems that already exist within this community for transportation, right? Because there are a few different options that exist for most people to get to and from the airport other than driving themselves in their private cars. And we want to make sure that those same options are available to all. All right. All right, well, let's move on to the the next subgroup, the creating an accessible accessible community group. Anyone have updates to share from that group?
We have not met yet, so we'll have more by the next meeting. I plan to organize a meeting for early March for us to get together and talk about creating an accessible community, but as of right now, there's no updates.
We still on on track thinking about having a get together for the spring?
Yeah, I mean, the get together of this, John. The get together is really easy to throw because it can be, it's basically just food and reserving the park. Depends on what kind of food we want. But that's generally, I mean, we could start planning that a month ahead of time, and that's not really a problem.
Okay.
So, yeah.
All right, how about the creating a culture of accessibility within the city of Bend group? Any any updates from from you three?
This is Stephanie, and a couple of weeks ago, Cassandra and I met and chatted a little bit about our next steps. And we put together this plan. Cassandra's going to reach out to, I wish I don't have my notes right in front of me. Andreas and was it Jacob? I don't remember his name. Anyway, to chat about the best way to to implement this with the city of Bend and where to start. We have created a, sorry, my notifications are super loud, so I hope that's not bothering everybody. We've created a why, why is this important? So we're talking, I'm sorry, I should back up. For anybody who doesn't know the history here, we are trying to, our goal is to have all of the city of Bend employees within three years be trained in the trauma-informed care. And our goal for 2024 is to have one third of the city of Bend staff be trained in trauma-informed care. And then do another third in 2025, and then the final third in 2026. And so we've created a little one paragraph, why is this important? Narrative, and then we're also trying, attempting to get pricing information from trauma-informed Oregon on what it would cost to bring a trainer here to Bend to train a group of people and what that would look like, the the time commitment and all of that. So I don't, Amanda or Liz, do you have any other updates?
This is Amanda, and I have an email into trauma-informed Oregon, and I haven't heard back yet. Regarding all of that information, I asked about pricing and what it would look like for, you know, I think City of Bend has about 750 employees, roughly. So, yeah, if it would be an in-person thing, anyway, I haven't, and my next move, if I don't hear from them soon, is to just is to try and find a phone number and make a phone call. So that's my little update.
Yeah, and on their website, they say that, you know, allow us 10 days for a response. That's a long time. I did call the number they have listed on the the website, and it's it's a Verizon cell number, and it just said that the person you're trying to reach is unavailable. So that wasn't very helpful. I did also, they do have a list of certified trainers, and there are two individuals here in central Oregon or here in Bend who do in-person trainings. One of them is an administrator for a preschool, and then the other one is a licensed social worker, I believe is what she is. So that individual is, her name is Elizabeth, and I sent her an email reaching out to see if if she had any suggestions or on putting together an in-person training. And I have not gotten a response back either, so that's kind of where we stand with the in-person part in trying to get a quote for pricing and and those specific details.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
And I think that's all that we have to update on.
Thanks, Stephanie. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is our roundtable. We're running a little ahead of schedule, so potentially we have like 20 minutes. Please share any meetings that you've attended, information that pertains to accessibility that you discovered over the past month, or firsthand experiences that you had about accessibility that you'd like to share with the group. We can, we can go around and give everybody, I think, a chance to share if if you'd like to. I'll just go based on sort of who I see. Maybe start with Liz, Liz Woodfin. Do you have anything to share?
Yeah, I was trying to find the digital flyer, but Full Access is partnering with the county and we're doing several different like parent caregiver sessions. This last one talked about group homes and foster homes and just giving the IDD community a little more information about resources and tools that they can use. And I wanted to follow back with the subgroup. The first one of infrastructure and transportation, I spoke to Jay Stubbs, who's the owner and operator of Modus Transportation. And he's one of the few that have ADA accessible vehicles, and he said that he's in the process of rebranding and buying more ADA accessible vehicles on for his fleet, and that he would be willing to come and chat at one of our COBAC meetings. So I wanted to throw that out there. And then also, another challenge for the taxi companies that I learned is the astronomical price for insurance, which really it it creates a barrier for them to have more more vehicles in their fleet. And so I would really like to circle back to us maybe making a recommendation or finding ways that we can have some type of incentive for for these companies. And those are just the thoughts that I that I had, and I'll circle back with information on the next session that the county and Full Access are doing.
Thanks, Liz. That's the insurance angle is something we haven't looked at that we probably should be. Thanks for bringing that to our attention. And that's really interesting news about about Jay from Modus, purchasing more or thinking about purchasing more accessible vehicles as well. I think that sounds like a great opportunity to connect with him. Let's go to other Liz, Liz DM.
Oh, hey, yeah. Well, I I have a question. There's a group I just heard about. Oh, shoot, I lost them. Destination Rehab. They do physical therapy, but they take people out on trips and help them with mobility issues, Parkinson's patients, MS patients, brain injury patients, or, you know, people. And I was going to look into this, but I was just wondering if anybody else is familiar with this group.
This is Amanda. I'm somewhat familiar with with them, but I don't know about like what kind of what kinds of vehicles they have. And I know that they're a nonprofit, and but they do I believe that they bill insurance. What I've heard from community members is that it's the the barrier for them is that it it's costs a lot of, like, their services are pricey.
Okay.
Yeah, they, I think their mission and what they do is pretty awesome.
Yeah, yeah, I'll I'll reach out to them. They sound great.
Yeah.
Thank you. And, yeah, it wasn't specifically about transportation, just you know, I thought they'd be a great resource, like, okay, we're looking at accessible put-ins for the river and parks and things like that. Well, they might have some thoughts about it. And they'd be a great, you know, some people to invite to our our big party in the summer and and things like that, so definitely reach out.
One more time.
What was that?
Can you repeat the name of the group one more time?
Oh, sure. It's Destination Rehab. And that's their URL, destinationrehab.org.
Cool. Thank you. Let's see, Nick, are you online? Do you have any updates for us?
Hi, yeah, this is Nicholas Raiden or Nick. Yeah, I don't have any updates at the moment. Just continuing with architecture and when I can, you know, incorporating accessibility guidelines and stuff, so that's kind of it for me.
This is Carl. Nick, are there any interesting accessible developments in the works or on the horizon that you've heard about in Bend lately?
Hmm, no, just, there's a lot of multifamily developments going on in town. You know, as we continue to grow and stuff, so those, for the most part, you know, all those will be complying with all ADA regulations. You know, I think there's some affordable housing communities going going up as well, but nothing that in particular that I'm working on, I'm working on a lot of I guess existing properties and making the building envelopes better, so, you know, so that people can continue that. But, yeah, just, you know, I'm looking at accessible paths in those communities as well, but other than the multifamily stuff that I had worked on at my prior firm, or that, that's all I can really, that's all I really know of. You know, there's quite a bit being planned or in the works within the community.
Thanks.
Amanda, I'm wondering, does anybody know if Habitat found a family to house in the home that was built with using universal design?
Oh, yeah, that was a cool opportunity.
Yeah.
This is Cassandra. I I believe that their application period closed when they're in the process of the consideration, but I believe next month we'll also have Melissa Camagna return from our housing department to give an update about some accessibility, some cool updates about what's going on with that. And I can ask and request, like, if she's got updates about the Habitat house that was shared widely, that'd be really exciting to hear what their status is.
Yeah, I think it'd be cool for us to somehow be a part of the welcoming, you know, when they when the family is chosen and when they move in, be kind of cool.
Oh, yeah.
Also, really quick, Destination Rehab has an event that they host annually, I'm not remembering the name of. But they have really awesome activities, and it's well, well-attended, so we might also consider having a presence there. You can look on their website and see what's going on there.
Oh, hey, I'm looking at their website. This is Liz Deetha Martin. They are going to do, there's a fundraiser for them at Nacho Grandma's Bingo on March 24th, so maybe we should get a table.
So Silver Moon puts on, they they host on Sunday mornings a benefit. And it's called Nacho Nacho Grandma's Bingo. Yeah, and so they sell tables for, it's 40 bucks a table, or it's like $10 a person to do the bingo, and it's really fun.
It's really fun. I just went to one a couple of weeks ago. It was great.
Apostrophe C H O, Nacho, Nacho. Yeah.
Okay, moving down the list. Aaron, if you're online, do you have any updates for us?
I'm here. Yeah, probably the biggest update or only thing we've been really doing is taking advantage of OAS. My daughter's doing snowboard lessons on Monday afternoons, and that's kind of been our focus for the last couple of weeks, so that's about it, though, and just lots of positive things to say about them.
Nice. Thanks, Aaron. About Corey, you got anything?
Hi, I don't have any updates today.
Okay. No problem. Did I miss anybody online? I think that was everyone. Oh, Stephanie, yeah. Sorry, Stephanie.
Oh, sorry. Took me a while to figure out where my mute was. No worries. Let's see, to update, we did have, we, COCA recruited a few of our community members to participate in a roundtable discussion that OSU Corvallis, their engineering department was holding concerning roundabout design and making it accessible for individuals who experience disabilities, specifically mobility challenges, and also those with vision impairments and blindness. And so we had, let's see, Carl participated, Jordan participated, Charlene, and Nancy Stevens that participated, and so that was last week. I believe that OSU Cascade or OSU, the Corvallis or engineering team would like to do a another kind of roundtable, like, site visit. I think they want to focus on Redmond, and I don't know any details about that, but it's something that they want to do here sometime this year. And kind of like what we did with CET with the walk-in roundabout site visits that we did earlier a few months ago. And along the same lines, COCA wants to plan another site visit as well, so maybe that's something that hopefully in the next few months, something that we can partner with COBAC on to see if we can bring another event here to either in Bend or do something in Redmond where people can go out and experience these roundabouts from the, through the lens of of a disability. So I think that's really all that I have to update on.
Thanks, Stephanie. Yeah, it sounds like there's maybe two distinct opportunities there. One, to look at roundabouts in in Redmond, and then one to walk some sidewalks here in Bend. I think I think for COBAC, since we are the city of Bend committee, we need to keep things local to our our community, but we would absolutely want to to partner with with COCA on that. So that's part of part of my subgroup's planning effort, so we'll be in touch with you about that, absolutely. I think it is about time to start planning that if we want to do it this spring. Great. Well, let's move into the physical room here for our our next member updates. Amanda, do you have anything to share?
Let's see. Diversibility, because looking for board members, if anybody is interested, you can check out our website and reach out to me. If that's of interest to you, we meet quarterly. And looking for some diversity, right now we have three, really three, we have one more board member who's kind of is a founding emeritus board member, so three board members, all females, and like some diversity in everything, so. Yeah, I think that's it. I mean, I'm sure. yeah, I think that's it. I mean, I'm sure I could sit here and share a bunch of stuff with y'all, but that's everything that's relevant to, to hear.
Thanks, Amanda. Derek, you got anything?
Yeah. Hi, this is Derek. These are mostly some kind of public transportation focused updates, but I will tie in some accessibility topics with those. So the last time we met, I talked about our, our Gillig low floor buses. These are the, kind of the versions that Counselor Campbell had helped us supported and helped us purchase years ago. Now we have a little smaller version. Those are going to be on the road soon. So those actually kneel for people with disabilities to be able to get up and not have to use the securement ramp in the backs. So we use those on kind of the major highways like Third Street, Route 1, Route 4, and that just helps, you know, get folks in and off the bus really quickly without really holding up traffic, because we know there's a lot of construction and traffic's already kind of backed up. So really helps our buses meet our time points, helps the people with disabilities have a little more dignity riding the bus and, you know, not having to kind of wait for the driver to come out, exit, load someone on the ramp. It is a time consuming process. So this is just a, a better way to provide public transportation, but you'll see those buses out soon. We're getting the graphics on now. So excited about that. The other thing that we're working on is a redesign of our Hawthorne Station parking lot. And so that's over in the Bend Central District. Currently, we have our buses queuing on both sides of Hawthorne. So if you guys are familiar with that, it's, there's Hawthorne Station, we have buses queuing on the north side, and then the south side is the entrance to the Safeway. It's like a liquor store there, the UPS store, Ace Hardware. And it's a lot of conflict points. So you have buses lining the streets, you have cars going both ways, and then you have people crossing the street and bicycles crossing the street, trying to get in the parking lot. So it's a little bit of, it's a little bit chaotic. So what we're doing is we're, we just went out to, to bid Knife River is the contractor. So starting this spring, we're going to start to actually redesign the back of the parking lot to have our buses start to queue there. So the goal is to take the buses off of that south side of Hawthorne, where they're currently like queuing up in front of the liquor store and Safeway there. So that provides like a wider street. There's a little bit better visibility. You know, if you're a car driver, you know, you can actually, you're not just going through a channel of buses to come down the street. And, and then, you know, that kind of frees up some, some, some places for, you know, also doing some kind of rideshare element in the back parking lot, the, using some of city's bike share system, doing some potential EV charging stations there and running conduit for that, having nicer shelters. I guess the goal would be, you know, we want it to make sure that it's ADA accessible. So we could do, you know, once it's, when it's being built or after it's built, you know, I could propose that we do something, maybe for welcoming week or something, we could do an event there, invite COBAC to, to, you know, to talk about some of the accessibility features. That's, I believe that will make it, I mean, we're fully accessible, but we're trying to improve on that as well and do better. So that's a cool project that's happening. And then two other projects, Route 8, we're hoping to implement this summer. That's in Northeast Bend. So it'll go along Third Street and then kind of around Pine Nursery Park, hitting Skyview Elementary. So maybe providing some opportunities for students to use that service and residence, and then it'll, we'll come back to Hawthorne Station. So we're trying to stand that service up right now. But we do have ADA compliant bus stops that we built about a year and a half ago. And then once we get the signage on those, the city will close out those permits for that. So that was a project that I was working on and then I won't take it anymore time. But lastly, a downtown pilot mobility hub project, you guys might have seen an article in the Bulletin. City Council last week approved our temporary use plan. And so this was going to be behind Troy Field. So I've been doing a lot of outreach for that to, to businesses, neighborhoods. That's another kind of accessibility point that we'd like to highlight and focus. And maybe there's some opportunity, and it's right across the street this summer. We're hoping to, to start construction in the summer. Nothing really permanent there, a lot of paint, a lot of bike share, that will have a, a nice bus shelter. And, you know, if we want to go out and check out the project, we're happy to, to do that. And we may do an Earth Day event with the Environmental Center. Working on planning that to have like one of our accessible buses out there. So maybe that's something that we could partner with, but more details to come.
Okay. That's all right. Thanks, Derek. Yeah, the low floor buses, they really are a game changer. I think not just for people with disabilities, just anybody boarding or getting off of a bus, I think we'll have an easier time with those. Taking off, Andres, thanks for joining us. No problem. Yeah, it reminds me of an experience that I had probably 10 years ago now, I was in London and the, at that time, the latest generation of those iconic red double decker London city buses were really just a marvel of accessibility for me at the time. I was waiting for a bus and, and when it pulled up, there was a blue button to push next to the door. And when I pushed it, the driver pressed a button without getting out of their seat to extend a, a small motorized ramp, which was deployed in a matter of about a second. And I rolled on and there was a, a nice little area that was sort of bordered on three sides for me to park in, in my wheelchair and secure myself however I, I felt like I needed to, without needing to inconvenience the driver or any other passengers. And we were on our way without me holding up anything or anyone. And I felt like I still had a nice, secure place to ride. And I really thought, remember thinking like, why don't we do it this way? So lessons to learn, but it sounds like we're headed in that direction. Myself, other updates, let's see. I'm, I'm also involved with Oregon Adaptive Sports as a volunteer instructor on the weekends. So I've been teaching lots of lessons. People who are, are learning to sit ski, so that's been fun. And also challenging at times, but it's, that's how it is. Oh yeah, as, as Stephanie mentioned, I served on that, that roundtable panel that met with the traffic engineers from all over the country via Oregon State, who were learning about roundabouts and how to design them and how to make them accessible. So that was cool to see and hear. And it was eye opening for me to learn about all the challenges that, you know, people with visual impairments can face trying to use those. I had taken roundabouts a little bit for granted as a Bend resident, as something that could be, that, that were more or less an unmitigated good, but I think my, my view is a little tempered by hearing some of their, their experiences. All right, that's it for me. John, do you have any updates?
Just as a business owner downtown dealing with snowy sidewalks, generally every time I shovel my sidewalk, which is 1,500 square feet, luckily I have a giant sidewalk. I usually take a picture and send it to Carl to show how good of a person I am. No, I'm not gonna, not a good person by doing the bare minimum. That's what's, it's what is required of businesses. I would notice that the, I did notice that in the last freezing snowstorm that we had, it was particularly difficult to clear the sidewalk because what happens especially downtown is there'll be snow overnight and then people will be walking on the sidewalk to get their coffee. And every time they step, it leaves a little frozen icicle, little ice cube that doesn't shovel up. And during that particular ice storm, it was very difficult to shovel the sidewalk because of that, but also because that was the first time I've seen in Bend where the snowplow just piled up a three foot high berm of ice in front of the sidewalk. Which, when you have a dinky little snow shovel, is really hard to dig through. I was able to, but it was a pain in the butt. So I guess we were, earlier this meeting, we were talking about snow removal and what that might look like as far as educating businesses and such. I think you're going to run into a lot of the same problems, which is just like with houses where some people aren't going to do their sidewalk because it's a rental or it's empty or it's a vacation rental and, or the house is just a vacation home. And so it's not being, it's only being used half the time because the other people are in Arizona.
Or they have a disability.
Or they have a disability, which you would hope that the neighbors would know, because I shovel my neighbor's sidewalk. But I mean, that comes back to community and maybe neighborhood districts and fostering a sense of community and hopefully neighborhood districts can step up to it. But I would say that, you know, we've always talked about how enforcement isn't really the option. I don't know, at what, at what point do we agree that enforcement is an option though? Like for instance, them putting speed cameras on the parkway, like we're all driving 40, 45 miles on the parkway, almost getting killed by people going 70. And at some point you gotta say, well, you know what, like maybe enforcement is going to work. So I guess maybe for our next meeting, or maybe there could be a subgroup, like I, I, I feel like we can better address the snow removal. I don't know if it's what that looks like, but it is frustrating. Even for myself, walking around downtown and having snow piled up in front of the crosswalk, or there being a, a six inch deep puddle of melted snow right near a curb cut. It's very frustrating. So yeah, I guess that's, that's my experience as a, as a shoveler downtown and at home.
Yeah, this is, we have, we have a, an item for agenda setting before we adjourn. So let's, let's get that on there to have that, have that snow conversation. I think that'll be great.
But I wonder if it would be better as a subgroup meeting, because this is, you know, like the thing that I've, I've realized in being in this group and having the subgroup meetings is that being in a subgroup allows you to kind of just jaw about things that you've experienced, whereas here we're hitting time limits, we're hitting agendas, we have to hit specific things. It's not really a conducive environment for me to be like, well, I was in this restaurant in Austin, Texas, and they did this thing and like, oh yeah, I was, you know, wherever. And, you know, it's, it's not really a brainstorming session that we can do during these things, which is why I'm so glad that our quorum is 11, because it means that so many of us can get together in a subgroup and, and, and talk about things and really kind of cut a lot of the fat that we would be saying during a, a public meeting, for instance. So I guess I would, I agree it should be on the agenda, but I think I would love to, I think, is David Abis coming to a meeting in a couple of months? Is that right?
This is Cassandra. Yeah, we'll have David Abis coming to present on a couple of accessibility initiatives from accessibility fundings that we've been taking planning for this, the rest of 2024's fiscal year. And so in addition to those updates, we could talk about, you could, you could also have questions that we send to him ahead of time or tell him about areas that you'd like to have him touch on. So we could definitely, definitely do that as well.
Yeah. Cool. I will, I know Abis, I met him once at my bar. So maybe I'll reach out to him and see what other cities are doing. And then maybe that way he can come with some answers or ideas when he presents at our meeting.
Yeah. And I, and this is Cassandra. I, I do think that it's going to take all factions. I think it's going to take COBAC's thoughts, the input of being on the street, the input from small business owners, shoveling, the input that we get from streets and transportations. And also, you know, leadership team and collaboration with City of Bend communication. And so as much, as much research and ideas that COBAC can come up with about how we can address this, and really what I'd really like to see this year is the dedication in the off season. I think that's the hard part when it's so sunny outside, you're like, it will never snow. This, this will not, this will not impact us. But we know that the things that we do in spring and summer and fall are going to then, you know, pay off come winter for next year. And like Jordan's public comment says, like, it, it's this really thoughtful way of saying, let's do the work now so that we benefit, we all benefit, like Carl was saying, we all benefit come, you know, December and January and February of next year.
And March and April.
I was gonna make a snide comment. He was saying the, the London buses are so great. And I was gonna say, that's making up for having an inaccessible city, but they got old buildings. They can't help it. Their sidewalks are like two feet wide. Cool. All right. Well, moving on to agenda item number eight, accessibility and equity manager update.
I just have three sort of quick updates. One, Nicholas Raiden had very generously written a letter, a draft letter regarding Kayla's public comment, John, that you mentioned earlier. And so we're in the process right now internally in the city of determining with our engineering department, like how, how we can request the items that Nick, Nicholas has identified. And then we'll bring that back in March to be able to bring to the whole of the group about potentially getting consensus around the letter that we want to submit to potentially change and impact the way that those exceptions in the law are written. So getting the ball rolling there. And Nicholas, thank you for your, your work on that. And again, apologies for the delay. And the time, it's just, it, it is taking a little bit longer than anticipated. So, but it's going to be on our next agenda. Update to that Census Bureau proposal, and I know that I discussed with you all back in January about the Bureau was thinking about a new way of defining who would be disabled, which effectively could limit and, and, and discard about 40% of folks who are currently identified as disabled. Great news in that front, from my perspective, is that the Census Bureau says it will not revise its disability questions. So they will stay as is currently. So that is, is, I, I think in, in terms of the landscape, a pretty big boon for, for folks who, who work and need funding and federal level, state level, local, all the things that we need to be represented. And they're, they, they couched the rationale in the place of saying, because it would vastly undercount Americans with disabilities and that they didn't center folks with disabilities in that process. And so I think that speaks to the importance of being able to always, nothing about us, without us, right? Coming back to that idea. So good news that I added a little lightning bolt even, because it was, it was that exciting.
Yes, Derek. So what was the input that went to, was that like a, an advocacy group or that really like swayed them to change that? Or I guess, I guess what was the mechanism that made them re, re decide that?
I think it was that the Bureau had opened public comment up for a period of time and those, those, those proposed rules and the proposed ways of defining came out to a point of saying, where did this come from? Did you ever contact folks with disabilities? And so a lot of feedback came in. And then I think with that kind of snowballed, a lot of the advocacy groups like kind of piling on. I think there were a few amicus briefs that might've been submitted by different disability rights groups. Just to say like, we were not contacted, we were not centered in this information. And ultimately, we're the ones that are going to be the ones to feel the, the brunt and the impact of this through funding, through all sorts of reasons. And so many of you who work in the communities know that it contingent upon the Census Bureau's data, like when we're talking about with Ben Barry, when we're talking about how do we make cases for that? How do we, how do we demonstrate need? Statistics so often play a part in that. And if you were to decimate that by 40%, it would, it would really impact. So it was, it was good to see that. But yeah, and, and that's a great, great sponsorship of the importance of advocacy and what you all do in your groups and why coming together in COBAC is so powerful and the change that you make in your community on local and, and larger level. So yeah, good, good times. Okay. The other update, and, and I think this, we've got a little bit of time, so maybe we could even pop back to, you know, transportation group. But I, I like to always feature different types of disability advocates. And Andrea Levant is really very bright, thoughtful, awesome disability advocate. I think that she's got great social media posts and wanted to feature an experience that she had regarding her mobility device and flying recently. So I just want to take a moment to read her, her information. She is a black disabled woman boldly confronting the world's expectations of her existence by living fully and authentically. She's an activist, communicator, innovator and style icon with over 15 years' experience working with nonprofit corporate, federal and philanthropic, philanthropic systems to advance access, equity and inclusion for people with disabilities. And this is a picture of her on a pink carpet and she does a lot of accessible design in fashion as well. So a very, very, a lot of different talents in, in what she does. But specifically, and I bring this up to you all here, is that was, was over the past month, I've been watching kind of an ongoing saga of her, as she traveled on Southwest Airlines, her power mobility chair was severely damaged during travel. And, you know, her, her quote here, well, this is just another day for Southwest. And, you know, her quote here, while this is just another day for Southwest Air, while this is emotionally, physically and financially devastating for us disabled passengers, our mobility aids are intertwined with our livelihood. This has still not been resolved and my chair has still not been repaired. And this is a series of Instagram posts that she had where she was highlighting different articles that have come out over the past five years. And the call from disabled advocates to do something about airlines, whether that be FAA or other groups, has largely gone unheeded. And so she is just using her platform to be able to share this with this unfortunate event that happened to her. And she shares about what had happened and, and, and I think that the joystick was broken off of her chair. She later found out that things were disabled and the back of the cords were just ripped out so that it became completely broken. She contacted Southwest Airlines using her platform. She had other folks who started tagging Southwest and a lot of things to no avail. She had somebody reach out to her, an independent technician who, who fixed it. I think it would have been low or at least sliding B scale and of low cost. But, but for that, it would have not ever been fixed by Southwest. According to Southwest Airlines, my wheelchair is baggage. Our mobility aids are our livelihood and an extension of us. For many, being without their wheelchair is life or death. This is dehumanizing. So really bringing that, that to, to the forefront. And I know we had a chance, a meeting with Carl and John this week, talking about the importance of being able for folks who are disabled to get to the airport. But what happens when they get to the airport? And so making sure that this is, this is something that's on our mind. Rights for Flights is a advocacy group that is really dedicated to championing and, and working with folks who are disabled and, and specifically their, their devices, their mobility devices, wheelchair power devices, and, and making sure that they hold groups accountable for that. And they suggest folks go to file complaints with the Department of Transportation, continue to follow and boost posts and don't stop talking about it. So that's why in the don't stop talking about it vein, I thought I will add these slides to COBAC to be able to use a little bit of platform to bring that back to you all. And I think it, it is full circle in, in the conversation about accessible transportation. And so, yeah, with that, I would, I would turn that back over. And I don't know, Lisa, if we have Counselor Campbell with us online.
We do not.
Okay. So with that, Carl, I would send it back to you for agenda setting.
Okay, thanks, Cassandra. So I'll open it up, I guess, to any members who want to suggest agenda items for a future, a future COBAC meeting.
Well, I think what John, this is Amanda, what John was talking about. I don't know, I'm not savvy to like the logistics of the committee. But do we need to like set up or like vote for establishing a subcommittee for a subgroup? Yeah, thank you. A subgroup for, for snow removal. Cause I know we talked about it being on the agenda. I guess I want to, I want to follow up and be clear about the idea of setting up a subgroup.
Okay. I think, yeah, I think, this is Carl. I think that's one option is we could create a new subgroup. Another option that comes to mind is that it could fall under one of our existing subgroups, like creating an accessible community perhaps? If we wanted to add that as an additional sort of aimed goal for that group.
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's fine. I think we could actually lump in the snow removal into, I know I've been a little frustrated with the, the Bend Works app in the sense of it not being tied in with code enforcement, which I guess I was hoping that that was what it was going to be. I don't know if any of you have ever tried to submit a burial removal request through the City of Bend, but usually they send you to a URL on their website. And then there's a image file size limit. When most of our phones these days take five to eight megabyte pictures. So you have to go in, edit the photo down to a certain size. But with the Bend Works app, you can just submit it and it works, which is great. But I, I have tried to submit a couple burial removal requests through that app. And they say, this isn't us, send it to code enforcement, which is a little frustrating. And I think that that ties into snow removal too, because it is a barrier that needs to be removed. So I think going up on a higher level, creating an accessible community group, I think a facet of that could be the code enforcement Bend Works meshing together and figuring out if there is a timeline for that, if that's even going to happen. Because, yeah, I just don't know.
Okay. Great. Well, do we want to devote any time specifically to that issue in the larger meeting as well? For March or do we want to just leave that as a subgroup thing?
I, I think, oh, this is John. If, if Abis is coming in April, possibly May, I think it would be nice for us to talk about it at a meeting before he comes. Or maybe if you guys think it would be more useful to do it after he presents. I don't know.
I think before would be good. This is Carl. Let's see, Lisa, Cassandra, what do you guys think about putting in 15 minutes in March for that? Discussion.
Sounds good.
Great.
Carl too, I'd be happy. I've been in, it's a lot of the burial removal requests that specifically pertain to my role. I've been in communications with code enforcement quite a bit and kind of trying to understand the nuances specifically around timing of sending out those non-compliance letters, sending out fines. And so I'd be happy to kind of give a brief summary too of their process so that we just have everything on the table. We see exactly what the processes are. And then we can identify, here are things that are suggestions or ways that we think this could be a little bit more seamless. Or here are things in feedback that you could incorporate during the off season to make it better for next year. And I'm not, I don't mean to give up on this season. I just mean, time is flying by and we're almost in March. But if that would be helpful, I'd offer that as like, I could either send that out in advance of like flow chart, like kind of this is the process of what it looks like, like John said. But happy to, to support with whatever it is in addition to the 15 minutes that we will allot to that meeting in March.
Yeah, I think that would be, this is Carl, I think that would be helpful to get maybe five minutes from you at the beginning of the discussion to go over what, what you've learned about that. Cause it's a patchwork, right? There's private, private landowners and business owners have a lot of the responsibility under Bend's system for snow removal. But the city also has some responsibility and the Parks and Recreation District has some responsibility. And ODA, right? So be, good to get a little overview of that patchwork before we dive in.
Yeah. Yeah. My other, this is John. Another question I would have is what are the capabilities possible for the Bend Works app? Because I know that they contracted with another company that does the same app for multiple municipalities. Is this a, a simple question of paying a hundred bucks extra a month for their subscription to add code enforcement capability? Or like what, what is the holdup here with, with code enforcement integrating with the Bend Works app?
Okay. Yeah. Thanks. That would be, let's see, do, do you think? Would, would Stephanie Betteridge be the right person to have talk about that, Cassandra? Or do you think there's someone else we should reach out to?
Yeah, I think a combination of Stephanie being able to speak to the Bend Works app and answer questions if, if we have those at the beginning of that. And then an overview of my understanding and communications previously with code enforcement and their process, what they look for and kind of their timeline. I think we could have definitely Stephanie attend and field questions and then head into the kind of overview of if the subgroup meets or we want to, as a, as a body, address snow removal. I think that sounds great. I'll have Stephanie come.
Okay.
This is John. I'd just like to say one more thing. You know, part of the reason I joined COBAC was code enforcement, people parking in the wrong spot. And I'd just like to mention that the car that was parked downtown the wrong direction, it took them, what, two, two and a half days to tow it? Like if that's not a sign that we need a, a contract with a towing company or something to, to open up these spots that are taken over. I mean, I don't know what else. I mean, I don't know, that car should have been out of there in a half an hour, but it took two days. And it's like, imagine you're circling downtown trying to find a spot and you can't find one because there's people illegally parked in designated spots. And the best answer I've ever gotten from Toby is, oh, we just ticket them. You know, and it's like, okay, well now I have to park three blocks away. And, you know, our sidewalks aren't in the best condition. So is that really fair?
I think they do, they ticket them and then there's like a 24 hours before they tow. But maybe they didn't see the fact that it was parked the wrong way. If it was parked the wrong way. Well, if it was parked the wrong way and they forgot to put that on there, they're going to think that it's just parked illegally. But yeah, they ticket, then I think it's like 24 hours before they do actually tow.
Any other agenda items people want to add or other COBAC business that we need to address today?
Well, this is Derek. I think we did talk, talk about potentially having Jay. I don't know his last name from Modus.
Yeah, Jay Stubbs.
Stubbs. So I don't know if that's like a little further out. But maybe we put a placeholder with that and as well as Gabe, if he was interested in coming. And that might be a good line to maybe have them both.
Yeah. Yeah. My, my friend, Gabe Russo, who we met with last night, Derek and I, he did say he'd be interested in, in sharing, sorry, some of his experiences with, with the full advisory committee. That, so that, that's a good idea. We could maybe have both, both of them come in. Maybe looking ahead to April or something like that.
This is Cassandra. It sounds like we're, we're creating a transportation themed April, which is, you know, I love a, I love a theme. So that sounds, that sounds great.
Great. Okay. Well, we'll, we'll take some next steps on that. Anything else? Great. Well, seeing that there is no further business, the City of Bend Accessibility Advisory Committee, February 22nd, 2024, hybrid meeting is adjourned at 2:24 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlene, for attending the meeting.